Meeting in order. The invitation.
Lord, we thank you for this time together. I pray that you would bless and use the leadership here. Bless them especially for giving of their time and their talents to lead and make wise decisions.
Only time I've actually ever been.
In your name, amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do need to add an executive session for competence of Christmas.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
There's been a motion to approve the agenda as amended. And a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Sorry, Amy, I'll give you a minute. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you come to the podium and state your name and address. Speak respectfully and limit your comments to three minutes. The commission will listen and consider your comments, but no immediate action will be taken at this time. Are there public comments? Please go on up.
My name is Becky Cardenas and I'm at four fourteen seconds. That's how it works when we're discussing. I came to ask if I could get a thirty day extension on the building permit. The contractor that I talked to, none of them, I have all of the equipment already bought, the siding, the paint, all of it. But they all want to use their own and charge more, so. Just trying to find a contractor who will use all the things that I've already bought. I just need an extension on either.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I'd just like to speak out against your new ordinance for parking. I'm just kind of fundamentally against laws and ordinances that further restrict people's rights to do what they do on their property. And I've spoken with Ashley and I also spoke with Mrs. Jackson about this. I understand that there are exceptions to the rule and that Ashley was talking about some guy that's parking his semi in their front yard and busting up the curb. Well, yeah, I can get where that wouldn't probably be a good idea, but I would hope you could maybe find a way to deal with that under your nuisance. I was just starting all over now. The stuff Ashley was saying the other day all made reasonably good sense, except depending on how you worded the next city manager, whoever could come through and take it the whole, whole different way. So I just, I just have a hard time with that because people park where they park for a lot of different reasons. Yeah, I know there's guys that got junk in their front yard and cars and all other kind of manner of business, but I would think you could find a way to deal with that under a nuisance ordinance opposed to a whole new set of issues. You know, I've got a neighbor across the street that Ashley also spends some time talking to. They're good people. They park a lot of stuff in their yard. He's got a big building, but when he's working here, he parks in his yard. If I sit on my front porch and I look at that and I'm thinking, you know, that looks a lot better with grass and weeds and stuff or whatever, you know, his yard's not great, here's mine. It looks a lot better like that than it would be if it was full rock and you know, I depending on what, how your ordinance reads, you know, he, he didn't have to move to Concordia, you know, he moved here to his wife's folks are here and they thought about moving, they're living out of town, but he's got his building and he does this thing and they're only here about half a year, I suppose. Yeah, I, I would not be surprised to see the ordinance run out and that'd be a terrible thing in my opinion because they watch our house, we watch theirs, so. I'm, I, of course, not having read what you're going to come up with, I, I would be very suspicious about the ordinance telling people what they can do on their property.
Thank you.
What's that? Oh, Mike Gallagher, six fifty-five v thirteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? At this time, we'll move to the acting agenda. We have the minutes of the March fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I'm going to approve the minutes to March fifth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Second, it's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, it's a second by Commissioner Hash. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number five.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number five.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Wentz, a second by Commissioner Lambert to approve appropriation ordinance number five. Is there any further discussion?
I had one question. There was a, a charge for letters and numbers. Michael Todd Industrial Supply, what, what were those for? I was curious.
Those are for street signs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Motion passes. Downtown Improvement Committee appointments.
Mayor Commissioners, we have a downtown improvement grant that has funds allocated within the city CIP funds where there's five thousand dollars allocated right now. The city has appointed CloudCorp as to have a committee to be able to review these grants and to administer those grants. The ordinance for the establishing the downtown improvement grant is included in your packet for reference. We do need to appoint two committee members to that committee, Monty Wentz and Jason Johnson, and I believe that their expression of interest forms are in your packet as well. Tim Bimes is here from CloudCorp and he can speak to any questions you might have about the downtown improvement grant or current status right now. But we would ask for your approval of those two new committee members tonight.
Yeah, happy answering questions if you have them. Well, I think they're both two relatively well-mannered gentlemen. Serve the interest of our downtown fairly well, so I would move to appoint Monte Wentz and Jason Johnson to the downtown improvement review committee.
Second, it's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, it's a second by Commissioner Hash. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have the North Central Kansas Medical Center contractual write-off.
Good evening Commissioners. In the past, as you can see in your memo, there's been a kind of a verbal agreement for a discount for the hospital when we do a specific type of transfer from one hospital back to ours. We're just trying to formalize it with the actual agreement here. I can't really put numbers on it, what it would cost us in a year because the numbers vary so much from one year to the next. I believe we've had years where there's only been three or four, and then we've had years where there's been ten, eleven, twelve transfers out and then back. I can tell you the average round trip transfer for one of these swing bed patients is about three thousand dollars. So we'd be looking at about a three hundred dollars per transfer loss on it. I will say the hospital is working with us on an agreement that they will cover paying nurses to help us with long distance transfers. And that's coming straight out of their pocket to pay those nurses to do it. Just in a time of need, and again, it'll be kind of like this, very inconsistent from one year to the next as a last resort, so. Yeah, any, any questions? Dave was going to be here tonight, but he had another meeting to go to, so if there is questions for him, I'd like to pass them on.
Questions, I think it makes sense for, I mean, the vast majority of the individuals are going to be residents. It just isn't mutually beneficial.
This is, has actually been going on anyway, right? Just formalizes it.
I move to approve the contract with North Central Kansas Medical Center for discounted swing bed patient medical transport rate at ten percent per patient.
Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Hash, a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the contract with North Central Kansas Medical Center. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Please mark me as abstaining. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-two thirty-four, parking prohibited on grass.
Mayor Commissioners, we bring this back to you again. We've discussed it a couple of times here. There were some questions at the last meeting specifically related to aggregate and whether that was locally available and then also to reflect it, amending the language to only prohibit parking in the front and side yards. So we've made that change to only prohibit parking in the front and side yards. This ordinance, if adopted, would not regulate parking in, in the backyards. We also did add, or I'm requesting to add, it didn't get in here, but a staff was looking at this afterward. Section one A talks about having the type of improvement for parking surface to be approved by the city building inspector and city engineer. We want to add public works director to that as well. It makes sense for the public works director to be reviewing and approving the design and the type of the improvement made, especially since it may involve another curb cut onto our streets. So we'd like to add that. And then also discussion of locally available aggregate. We did find some locally available aggregate. Shane has had the majority of those conversations along, and Jason Johnson is here as well, that has also drawn up some details, had some conversations. So I'm going to let, turn it over to them and let them speak to that, to the design, and then as well to the aggregate availability. Yes, I don't have to jump up at once.
Just do a reeling from my appointment to the city downtown.
Too late.
I've been working with the city staff on trying to flesh out how this might work should this ordinance come into effect. Our office has been trying to hunt down this aggregate or crushed rock that would be acceptable surface in a scenario where that would be what the landowner would want versus, say, paved driveway, concrete, asphalt, or even a concrete paper type of option. We've also then tried to create, well, we haven't tried, we have created some graphic scenarios that would give staff and the residents of Concordia an idea of what would be acceptable or what would be restricted versus non-restricted parking. And so should this ordinance go into effect, these graphic scenario diagrams, together with some details about what how a driveway or a entrance or a new driveway could be constructed in a way, the manner, in a manner that the city would want, could then become an informational packet for the city staff to use. So if, you know, a landowner had been notified that by the city that they would like to see them do something different than parking on their front yard or in an area that is restricted, and they want to know, well, what can I do? The city could pull out this packet of scenarios and the detailed standards for what those would look like and that would give those people those options. And so and I can see that as being, and even though the, the ordinance might be fixed, those scenarios could be expanded or contracted based upon available materials or what is found to work and not work in the future in those particular scenarios then type of thing. Our office will always be available to work with the city staff on making digitalized determinations if need be. And I think Shane and I, I'll let him speak, we both had conversations with local suppliers of crushed rock or gravel. There are some options out there that will be made, that could go from a range of something that is totally washed at a higher end expense down to something that is a lower dust option that would be at a lower expense that would not cause a an environment for the neighborhood that wouldn't be liked by the neighbors. The worry would be, and I would caution you to think about that in a sense where when we talk about a dust, dusty aggregate, a lot of people think about I drive down a cloud county road and there the white limestone rock when I'm driving my vehicle forty miles an hour, there's a white, big white cloud behind me type of thing. Well, you're not going to pull into your driveway at forty miles an hour. At least I hope you don't. Otherwise, then the city police are probably going to have to get involved in that conversation. So a, a, a crushed rock that has some fines or some dust to it once put down into a driveway and is rained on a couple of times or even watered by a landowner will allow that dust and those fines to settle down or filter through the rock and leave you with something that looks or appears to be washed over time. And so what might be dusty getting dropped on the ground will become very much less dusty right away. And those options are available at a cheaper rate than a totally washed rock. If you know, that all sock would pull out of the river and wash down and stack in a pile in forty type of thing. Want to add to that or no? Yes, no, maybe?
Pretty much answered it all, but yeah, I did do some legwork on that. And there is rock available at both locations. So that's one of the obstacles for me. How did I get it? So they are both available though.
I think it's important to run a mission at early discussions. Our current regulations on off-street parking, say asphalt or concrete, and you'd ask us to take a look at an option that may be more or maybe less expensive for residents that may not be able to afford the asphalt or concrete. And the aggregate option allows the property owner to go ahead and hire somebody to do it for them that may have the equipment and the expertise for how to compact that rock, how to dig it down, how to make it at the right slope, that sort of thing. Or they could do it themselves if they felt. I know in Shane's research, he's found that the aggregate's available locally, but there may be some challenges as to loading and hauling, depending on the equipment that the property owner has available to, to bring it to their site. And so that is, that is one of the challenges. I do want to mention that their owners and tenants still have the option to park on the street. They still have the option to park in the rear yard, preferably again in front of a garage or on, on some improved surface. Our goal with this ordinance is to ensure that people are not hopping the curb and damaging the curb, which in turn damages our storm sewer system and causes additional repairs for the city at large. We also want to make sure that the aesthetic of our community is one of pride, and we've been discussing a lot about property maintenance. And so the aesthetic of muddy ruts in yards could be prevented if we adopt this ordinance as well. So no one has to park in their front yard, no one has to make an improved surface if we pass this ordinance, they still have the option to park on the street or in another driveway area.
I had a question more on the legalese of this, and Justin, if you can help me. One of the things I want to make sure, since we have such a high amount of our residential properties that are owned by landlords who may not even be living here, that the folks who are actually doing the parking on the lawn would be the ones who get the fine and not necessarily the property owner. It's unclear in section nineteen four oh eight A because it lists property owner to the person at home of motor vehicle or trailer registered, but is it that actual vehicle, the person who owns the vehicle that gets that ticket, or is it the property owner?
So generally, it would be the person who it's registered to. Now, we have had situations with some other things in town where we always try to engage with the person who would be owning that vehicle or living in that property. It has got to a point with some folks where in order to get their attention, we then have to go to the property owner, but that's never our, our initial move that we make. But we have had to get to a point where we'll get the property owner involved and say, this is a problem on your property, and then action is taken then. But the way I read that is no property owner, tenant, person to whom a motor vehicle or trailer is registered. So you know, if, if I let my kids drive my car and they park it in, you know, and it's registered to me and they park it in the yard and then, I mean, I'll get a ticket because it's registered to me. But whenever that happens, generally, those people make sure we're aware of who maybe was driving and then we can deal with it from that point, but it would be whether the vehicle is registered to.
Okay, that's how I read it too. I just made it on clear. I did have an opportunity to talk with Mike and his wife Annette a little bit, and she said something to me that really stuck with me that I think we can be helpful with, and that is that there, there was a certain street in town where there, there aren't options to park on the street at all. But it's a very small, it's a very small block, a half a block or so. And there are folks that you can tell maybe have some physical abilities, which is why they pull way up to the front. And then in few, some cases, they meet both of those, the access hardship and the physical hardship, one or the other. And then it comes with number three, the financial hardship where yeah, it's either access or disability and they, they need that help. So I would like to propose that in addition to this, we look at, at budgetary time to look at a grant similar to the downtown improvement grant that would go up to two thousand dollars per person, half of the cost up to two thousand dollars per person. And look at a total max amount, whether that's ten thousand, that which would do five projects or which would take care of the block in question, not, maybe not necessarily everyone, but they would have to meet two of those. They would have to show a physical dis hardship and a financial hardship and/or an access hardship or a physical hardship. But one of those three, they'd have to meet a majority, two or more of those in order to access those funds to help them be in compliance with this. And I think that could really help on that financial piece.
I think that's a good idea. I think that there are there, there are a few exceptions where there is a legitimate need or concern. So finding a device that she can. To, to speak to your concerns, sir, I, I, I feel very conflicted because I am not a fan of overstep. I enjoy the peace of my property. But I also work hard to be a good steward of my property so that my neighbors may also enjoy their property. I, I know the, the I know of the individual that you were speaking and would wonder if they would have been as likely to move to Concordia if we didn't have the mechanisms in place to help maintain this as an attractive community. So where, where some legal language to encourage people to be good stewards of their property might be viewed as restrictive and prohibitive to people moving out of Concordia, it might also be something that attracts people to Concordia because we are a, a community that, that is working towards taking pride in itself. And so I think when we're talking about somebody who's just moving a vehicle out to, to work on something, you know, we have a lot of nuisances that could be acted upon in a very acute sense that we generally don't because it's generally not a problem. It's, it's something that most people would recognize as being more of an exception than the rule. Unfortunately, I think that we have, I have found myself to be in a, a, a spot where this really is geared towards those who are not being good stewards of their property. This is geared towards the individuals who are not of a disabled nature or who are struggling with other financial means. It's simply a neglect issue or, or lack of pride that has been difficult to address through our current nuisance language, which is why we started going through the process to address it as a very specific parking ordinance. There are opportunities where you can park on the street with the exception of a very few locations or find alternate places to park. So this is really really meant to address those that are the most problematic and really hindering other neighbors from enjoying their property the way that we would hope most of our citizens would be able to enjoy their property. So I, I appreciate the concern. I appreciate the reservation. I wish this was not an issue that needed to be addressed. It is, and I think that we're working towards finding a way to address that in a way that, that is respectful of, of individuals' independence and the sovereignty of their home, but also respecting the sovereignty of their neighbors' homes. It's, it's been a difficult thing to achieve and, and we may not have it all ironed out yet, but I think we're moving in about as good of a direction as we can to address this issue.
And I was looking as well, it had been, just so everybody's aware, when it comes to the nuisance, you had mentioned, address it under the nuisance ordinance, it, it couldn't be addressed under the nuisance ordinance because that would only, that only deals with notably, when we're talking about vehicles, we're talking about inoperable vehicles. So this a vehicle that is just parked in the yard is not considered under our ordinance as a nuisance, so. And we deal with a lot of nuisances in court.
Any other comments?
A question for you, Ashley, the, the suggestion that you made, that would, would, would that be language contained within the ordinance or outside?
No, outside.
And, and also, I, I also appreciate that different people can interpret this differently, and if we have different leadership in the city manager position or the, the city commission. But I think if we, if we started looking at everything that way, I mean, there's a lot more potential for problems than just this, and so we'll need a lot more concerned citizens to step forward and challenge that truly authoritarian hand, which I don't think that we're in the spot to do now, but, but I appreciate that concern as well.
Any other comments?
Ashley, I did, I did appreciate the suggestion that you made with regards to hardship, especially, and disabilities. Obviously, in those circumstances, you know, if somebody is already parking in their yard, especially in conditions that we've had this winter, where it's creating muddy ruts, that's difficult anyway, if you have some type of a disability to be parking in muddy ruts. And so I, I would think it would be a significant benefit to have some level concrete to get out on. And obviously, that's the most preferred method, but, but it is also probably the most expensive. And I guess just to speak to Mr. Gallagher's concern, I also concur that our, our properties micro-managed, we want to have, you know, the ability to, to have say in what happens in our, at our properties. But along with, you know, with what Chuck said, I, I think he, he explained that really well, so. Sorry, I'm losing connection.
I think we got, we got most of that point, Amy. Thank you.
I would, I would move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-two thirty-four as amended with the addition of the additional staff members.
Second. It's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, it's a second by Commissioner Hash to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-two thirty-four as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Frank Carlson Library Reappointment.
I don't know that we have anybody from the library.
We do.
Order, do you?
Well, we have Amy, but we also have Russell.
Oh.
Amy or Russell, do you guys want to present on the appointment to the library board?
Laura Watson is an outstanding president of the library board, and she has spearheaded this remarkable stained glass project. If you haven't seen the first painted glass, it's special. The kids from the high school are helping design it. It's an amazing piece of work. It's a big tip of the hat to Laura. She's a great leader and she would do well with another term on the library board.
If someone could find someone who's more enthusiastic in serving in this capacity, I would really.
She's wonderful. And she's got this really cool gavel to bang.
I would move to reappoint Laura Watson to the Frank Carlson Library Board.
Second. It's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, it's a second by Commissioner Wentz to reappoint Laura Watson to the Frank Carlson Library Board. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Would now entertain a motion to go into executive session. Is this an appropriate time?
I would move the city commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential business that are trade secrets of a business, subject KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B four with Annie Lang, Justin Farrell, Bryce Bowers in attendance, and to reconvene in the city commission chamber at fifteen, sixteen? Sixteen?
It's been a motion to go into executive session for the uh mission reasons. Is there any further discussion? Not all of them, they ever say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Motion passes. Amy, could you hang up and call me? Now I'll put you on speaker.
Yeah.
Uh, no action was taken.
I would move that the city commission recess into executive session for the same reason, this time inviting Amy Lang and Justin Farrell in attendance to reconvene at six twenty P M.
Second. In a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Motion passes. No action was taken. We'll now move on to reports. And let's move on to our manager's report if she's ready.
There, Commissioner's willing to let you know that we did issue press release today and information about citywide annual cleanup for twenty twenty-five. Basically, the same as last year with one major change. So we are still going to pick up tree limbs that are four inches in diameter or smaller. We will also pick up furniture and appliances in the curbside, provided that residents have them sorted at the curbside. And that's the residents' responsibility. For passenger car and truck tires, historically, we've had them at the curb. This year, we're going to ask residents to take them to uh the lot across from the city shop at Second and Mill Street. Between the hours of eight A M. and four P M., they need to show proof of residency in Concordia to the staff member that's staffing that area, and then they can deposit them in the truck that we have, and we will dispose of them for free. The reason we're going to try that this year is because um the last couple of years, we have had some observations and complaints of folks coming in and dropping tires on other people's property, including vacant lots to have them disposed and take advantage of our free program. We want to ensure that this program is available and continues to be free for our residents. So we'd like to try that change this year. Um, this year, the city crews are going to be starting to pick up items the week of Monday, April seventh, and so we're really asking people to use that weekend before to use April fifth and sixth as their times to set items at the curb. Um, especially with the high winds that we've had recently, we really want to minimize the amount of time that items are at the curb so they don't blow all over the place. So people could use that weekend, April fifth and sixth, set items at the curb, then beginning at seven A M. Monday, April seventh, city crews will start picking those items up. Anything to add, Shane?
Uh, we'll probably be marking off what streets we'll be going down. So if they set them out later, that was the opportunity. So down where we start, if we go through there.
Yes, like in in the past, at the end of each day, we post to Facebook, hey, we're done here, we're done here, we're done here, and that way people know that we've already been by.
Everybody by the setup.
That's all I've got, Blake. Any staff reports?
Just wanted to give you a brief update on Miltonville EMS situation. So the other services around have agreed to do a uh formal agreement with them of some kind. Um, officially, they have, and there's also a bill going through the Kansas Legis- Legislature right now that helps Miltonville out a lot. So we're probably going to look at doing a different type of contract with them that we would just contract uh specific times that they can't get coverage uh for themselves um that we would have a B schedule for um because that's one of the things that the board of EMS said is that contract has to have a uh monetary side to it. Um, it can't just be in goodwill. Uh, but I do have a phone call with Blake this evening to uh talk about that. Hopefully, we start making some progress on that.
Appreciate that.
So I just wanted today was our Big Blizzard Day, and I just kind of want to update you from the time I got called up about four o'clock this morning for a mental subject, and we knew that the blizzard was coming, so we were kind of short-staffed anyway, but I just want to say thank you to this city staff because between eight and eight o'clock this morning and five P M. tonight, we had sixty-one calls, nine, 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 nine active nine-one-one calls, which were all between a rollover, pipelines down trees, and I just want to say thanks to the city staff for getting, helping dispatch out and getting there quickly because the phones were ringing. So but I just kind of want to update you on, that's kind of what we look at on a day like today, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Any other staff reports?
Yes. One second. Thought I had it ready. So just to give you a little update of what I'm kind of dealing with. On B seventh, this is over by the middle school. We are experiencing a lot of problems with this road, um starting to crack out a lot, and we've been fixing it. We fixed one spot in front of that. Could you, could you scroll down? Uh, with the button. Just uh, there you go. Sure. Yeah, so uh our first our first problem was uh right in that crosswalk area where the middle school was, and we had to dig down. It was three and a half feet to get to more solid to build a base. Um, but as we were, as we were noticing on further down to the west, it was deteriorating also. We're going to be fixing that next week. Um, but I just want to let you guys know that that road is rapidly deteriorating and and it's um one of the main roads that I plan on getting fixed sooner than later, so. But just to let you know that that's where we're at on that. Scroll down a little more. There are some pictures of what we were dealing with. There's the crosswalk that goes over to the middle school, and then is there one more picture? That's us finishing up that first spot. And then just beyond those vehicles, there's another really bad spot, kind of right behind a corn village, so. Yeah. On top of the poles, this is, this is what we're dealing with, but just want to give you guys a little update.
Shane, I've I've been thinking about this for a while, and it's just like, maybe it's easy time to ask it. Um, yeah. On on Republican, and I think it was from Eleventh South, I forget to where, we did a mastic covering that seems to have been holding up pretty well. I didn't know if that's something that is is cost prohibitive, or if that would be something that on Seventh Street might be something that would help maintain the integrity or
I I I don't think at this point a mastic covering will will do anything for this street.
Uh, sure, I guess maybe not. But it seemed to me like that was, some of it has held up well.
It has. Um, so my intentions are moving forward is is to identify the streets that can be rejuvenated with a little bit of lifespan with the mastic, and then after maybe even a a mill and overlay of sorts, then giving it some time and then doing a a mastic overlay to keep the life expectancy of that asphalt a little bit longer so we can move on down with other projects. It's kind of going to be a a leapfrog effect, sure. Um, and this street also poses a lot of challenges with drainage, um as it's a pretty flat street. So um I have Campbell Johnson looking into trying to figure out if if the storm drainage there is going to be adequate enough when we do do an overlay on that.
Do you know what? Do you kind of have in mind a time, a feasible timeline for seventh, and that can maybe be done with school night session or?
Uh, it it'd probably end up being a summer-based project, hopefully planning it around rec sports because that is a very busy street.
You want to mention the estimate of what it's going to take to do that? Finances are a real thing.
Yeah, this is, this is going to be a pretty big undertaking. I didn't bring those.
I think I have it changed.
Um, this was last year, we had brought
Maybe he doesn't want to mention that.
Yeah.
A discussion. It's going to be, it's going to be pretty pricey.
Yeah, and this is, yeah, this is last year's, not including any storm sewer that might need to be.
Yeah, this was just an overlay, not including any storm storms, uh storm drainage, that's just for Seventh Street. Was three hundred and eighty-six thousand sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents, so.
So we're looking at summer twenty-six is what the timeline would be at this point?
Yes.
Okay, and is that actively, is that what we're looking at for C I P for this year in our budget? As we build that out?
So the budget for this year includes like Eleventh and Highland and the Sea Clip Project on eighty-one, the approach to the Viaduct. So when we come to you for budget study session, Shane's going to ask you for for funding for this one.
Yes, and I'm working to update the estimate for Seventh Street based upon needs and what he now knows. Sorry to interject in your staff. Oh, no, um, a curb line that it walks, it holds water all sorts of spots. I'm afraid that all the curb gutter will need to be replaced and
So how much of Seventh Street you're talking?
From Matthew to the sports complex.
The east side is what?
East side of sports complex, where we picked up from the county.
Long stretch of the street.
It is a very long stretch of street, and in that, we'd probably also include Doster Street from Sixth to Eighth.
Doster is what goes by the middle school between the middle school and Chados. Most people don't recognize that one because it's only
right, so. Um, yeah. That's what I got.
Thanks, Shane. Any other staff reports? Hey, we'll go on to Mayor Commissioner comments. Let's start with Michelle. Or you always start with Amy?
Yeah.
Let's start with Amy.
Well, I just appreciate you guys allowing me to participate through Zoom, um and I do much appreciate being there in person instead. I don't have anything this evening.
Michelle?
Nothing.
Okay, I guess I have, I have nothing as well. Uh, would entertain a motion to then adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
You've been a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting's adjourned.